I think the Lord was talking to us right there. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so very much for allowing us to meet here as free men and free women. Give us the guidance to take the challenge on of the upcoming flood that's heading our way. Please protect us, protect all of our citizens and their property and all of our employees from harm's way. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the motion. Say that one more time.
Okay, I turned it on and it's not acting right.
Okay, I hear you fine.
Well, no, the recording equipment's not working right. So y'all don't say anything that you don't want me to get.
Okay.
Okay, Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Oh, not here.
Yes.
Yes. Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay, these are a little bit different than we had last time. And let me tell you the difference, that we can, four mics can be on at one time.
They're on.
Not counting mine and Diane's. So there's six altogether. So Diane and I are, we override, and then four council members can be on at one time. Okay?
And red is hot.
Red is hot, where it used to be green. Okay?
So what do we do? Do I turn it off?
You have to tell him to turn on, brother.
Push to talk. Push to talk. The, I think the speakers in the back are fixed. Can y'all in the back row hear me fine?
Wow.
Okay, good. Good deal. Absolutely. We got a couple of presentations. Our beautiful St. Joseph's Orphanage has just turned into a wonderful place. And Sandra, of course, is here and is going to tell us a little bit about what's going on out there and talk about some of her people. Sandra.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, Council. It's a pleasure to be here today. A comfortable area. Great group of folks that I'm interested in introducing shortly. So Nathan, if you'll pull up the slide just real quick. Just wanted to inform everyone who's here, if you have not been out to St. Joseph's Center, we hope you will come soon. It's the old orphanage at the end of Camp Robinson Road, a 63-acre property with a 56,000-square-foot historic building on it. So it's becoming a wonderful place for agritourism and tourism that we're hoping will also benefit the city. Okay, Nathan? There we go. Our tagline is "Farm Life, City Living." It's unusual that you would find an acreage that size within city limits, and we're very excited to be able to capitalize on that and offer that as an educational opportunity for our schoolchildren and urbanites to come and learn about where their food is grown and how it's grown. Next. We have several different gardening programs at St. Joseph's, and the AmeriCorps crew that's here that I'll introduce in a few minutes is helping us get those in tip-top shape. Next. That's an introduction. This was before they even got here. They gave us a nice picture of the en route. And I'm going to let Harris, who's their team leader, explain a little bit more about NCCC. But just safe to say, this is our third team we've been blessed to have. They were here for 12 weeks. They arrive mid-April and will leave mid-July. And in the interim, we'll do an incredible amount of work, including the gardens. They've already been hard at work installing additional garden beds in our community gardens. And we are now up to 42 beds, which is really exciting. It's a great little community of folks. Next is our indoor projects. Hard to believe y'all had to wear jackets when you first got here. They're receiving instruction, and everyone here is now, thanks to the Central Arkansas Master Naturalists, certified in chainsaw. Next. So they fill all kinds of roles. I just threw those pictures in to let you know that they are doing lots of things to act as our ambassadors when we host events at St. Joseph's and also to help us keep the building and grounds in top-notch shape. Next. One of the major projects while they're here is pasture restoration. The plan is to have a rotational grazing program for St. Joseph's, which will allow us to run our cattle, followed by chickens, goats, and sheep, so that we can keep the pastures up to speed in terms of grass production that benefits the animals. Right now, they have undergone about 40 years of neglect, unfortunately, so it's taken us a little while to get things back together. But to do that, you have to have effective fences. So all these folks have been working very hard to install, what is it, Burt, close to five miles of fence? Yep. Next. The other thing we have on the hill is high tunnel garden production. If you haven't seen those yet, come out and see us. It's offered just an amazing opportunity to grow things for an extended period of time. We start earlier in the season and go late. So these folks have been learning all about those techniques, and they will be teaching them at our nature camp that we're offering for the first time this end of next month, June 17 through 21st. So if anyone here has interest in getting your rising 3rd through 6th graders out to come learn more about farming and gardening, we'd love to have them. And with that, I'd like to introduce the team leader, Harris. And come on up. They're going to explain to you. Team members, why don't you follow? And I'll let Harris start by just saying a few words about NCCC, and then the team members will introduce themselves.
Should I speak first here?
A little bit of both.
My name is Harris Blessey, and I'm the acting team leader of this team of AmeriCorps NCCC members. AmeriCorps NCCC is a national service program for 18- to 24-year-olds who take a 10-month period to do national community service across the country. So currently, this team is stationed here in Arkansas, but we've been in many other places across the southwest region of the United States over our 10-month period so far. So to show how, show how, what did I say? I apologize. To show how many different places we come from across the United States, we'll introduce ourselves and where we're from. So I'm Harris, and I'm from New York.
I'm Robbie Allen Vander, and I'm from Flint, Michigan.
I'm Diana Rutherford, I'm from Colorado.
I'm Miles from Wisconsin.
I'm Amy.
I'm Eric from North Carolina.
I'm Jean from New York.
I'm Howard from Cleveland, Texas.
Thank you very much for what y'all do.
And for anyone who has more questions or needs more information, I've left some literature over there for you to pick up.
Thank you, Sandy.
And we just want to thank you very much.
Hey, I wanted to come down here, and we're going to make Building Safety Month, the month of May here. You know, our code officers that really pay attention to how safely your homes and businesses are built, and so I'm just going to read just a little bit of this. "No Code, No Confidence," the theme for Building Safety Month 2019, "encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure the safety of our built environment, and recognizes that implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and business." So now, therefore, I, Joe A. Smith, Mayor of the City of North Little Rock, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Building Safety Month, and I'd like to ask Roger Green to come up, who is in charge of all of our plans review and all of our inspectors, and I'll present this to Roger to give to all of his people. Thank you, Roger, for what you do. Anybody want to pull anything out of there? All right. Number two. I don't know if I can answer it, but ask it.
This is a small farm wine manufacturer. Will they be manufacturing wine in Hogs Blues Cafe, or how?
I don't know. Do you, Amy?
I didn't see this until late. Too late to call.
Ms. Whitby?
Actually, I had Caitlin call ABC today to try to get more information, and they really didn't have much more information. They did say that the application is to make wine at that address, which is also the address of Hogs Blues Cafe.
I don't have a problem. If you want to pull this and hold it and not accept it, then we can find out exactly what's going on and do it next time.
I don't have a problem. I was just wanting more information on it. I mean, if ABC approves it, I don't have a problem.
About a motion then.
Is this a motion on all three of them?
Yeah, motion to approve all three.
Okay.
Except all three. And we got a second over here? Anybody?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, it's your call.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Ken?
Ken?
And Height?
Yes.
Okay, let's go right on into public comment regarding upcoming legislation. I'll just go down the list from top to bottom. Looks like Brian Vines regarding oh, 1967. Three minutes, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make four points. We're asking to rezone the property from R2 to C3. First point is that the property around it is light commercial. Property to the north is residential. Second point is this frontage on 40 and I-430, making it not suitable for residential. Number three, again, because it's fronted on the interstate, more suitable for light commercial. And then the final one, we know there's residential to the north, so we've added a 70-foot buffer to buffer the business, any business that goes in there from the residence to the north. That's it.
Okay, thank you. James McGlaugh?
McGlaugh. McGlaugh.
Trying to make this short. I've spoken before on this. I'm here on behalf of our neighborhood, as one of the ones on behalf of our neighborhood, to clearly object to the rezoning for commercial use. We, the neighborhood, would like transparency for the zoning request. North Little Rock already has, just this easy Google search, has, you can Google North Little Rock, and there's 284 available commercial properties that are available right now. In our zoning, or in our zip code alone, in that area, there's 84 listings available for commercial property. The neighborhood, our neighborhood, would like a paramount reason for the rezoning. We can understand, we're looking, and we've heard that the seller is wanting to sell it to professional business, which is a professional business, which is doctors, lawyers, and this is what has always been told to us. That's fine and good, however, there's no proof. What kind of written guarantee are we going to get that that's what's going to happen this? Once it gets turned over to commercial property, whoever buys it has free rein of what it's going to do, as long as it stays in the characteristics of that commercial zoning. If it doesn't, if the property fails or for some reason they don't like it, what's going to stop it from two years down the line rezoning it again? The property has been zoned for, as far as I can remember, for residential. We're asking that, we're not opposed to growth. We are looking for growth. We would love to see our neighborhood develop in a prosperous way for North Little Rock and our neighborhood. We're asking that the property be sold as residential properties. I can't, we still haven't been given a reason other than it's too close to the highway for residential, which we have proven in our last meeting. We sent Mike, we prepared a whole thing on other neighborhoods that are even closer than ours to the highway. The neighborhood we believe in. The neighborhood is available, it's a good available space for residential. That's what it was zoned, that's what it's zoned for. We don't see any reason for rezoning it for anything else. There's no benefit to us. There's no benefit to the neighborhood. I don't see a big benefit in North Little Rock. We're asking that the property remain as residential. The reason it hasn't ever sold residential is because the seller has never offered it for residential, for the people to buy residential. Me personally, myself, I live as close to the highway as I would be there. I'm ready to downsize in my house. I love the neighborhood. I'm not looking to move. If I can buy a lot, if it was available for sale for residential, I'd be buying a lot as soon as I could to build a one-story or something that was more appropriate to me and my family in that neighborhood. And we're just looking, we're here, we're asking everybody to be transparent. We're telling you why we don't want this. Give us a reason why you need to rezone this if you haven't even tried to sell it as residential property. And with that, I will end.
That was perfect. That was three minutes and two seconds, by the way. I love your, I love your passion. I challenge anybody else to out-passion him, so.
Yeah.
All right, next we got Michael Lawson on the, and I didn't say this, oh, 1967, so please come up, Michael.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, the council members. That's going to be a hard act to follow out there.
Yeah, it is.
My name's Michael Lawson. I live in the neighborhood in question, 7400 Laurel Ridge Lane. I'm here today speaking for myself and some of my fellow neighbors and property owners, some which are here, if I would just stand up. Everybody that's here opposing this. We're opposed to the rezoning and, in our neighborhood, from residential to commercial. I furnished everyone in the, all the council members' last meeting with a petition signed by 32 property owners that are also against this. Not everybody can be here. Also, as James said, I furnished accessories, maps of properties through Pleasant Valley and other areas over in Little Rock. They're just as close to the interstate as this property is here, so we dispute all that said there. Couple of points I'd like to make, and I'll try to be quick. First and foremost is that the rezoning of this property would be a commercial intrusion into our residential area. Yes, there is some commercial south. If you look at the city maps, the commercial is, it's an east and west line right there. It's the dividing line. Commercial is south, residential is north, and that's why we want to keep it that way. Our neighborhood is not designed, the infrastructure's not there to support a commercial building, especially, they're saying, a three-story professional building. You've got a lot of coming and going there. Well, we, I'm not going to go into all the particular aspects, but I would like for the council to consider the weight of the unanimous decision against the rezoning by the North Little Rock Planning Commission, and that is their purpose, is to look at these things and take all the information and make a ruling on it. We had one recusal, everybody else was against this. We had no affirmative votes for this from the planning commission. We contend that reclassifying the property from residential to commercial will have a negative effect on the adjoining neighborhood, and this point was also asserted by the planning department as well. I also contend that a negative effect translates to reduced property values for the residential area. I dispute the assertion that the property's not suited for residential development due to the close proximity to the interstate. And lastly, I dispute the way this is written in Section 4. We're all for commercial development in the correct areas. Section 4 of this ordinance, second sentence says, "The rezoning of the above-described land as provided for herein to allow commercial development will not be detrimental to or interfere with other occupants in this area." We dispute that. We think it will be detrimental. And we dispute the fact that it is immediately necessary in order to ensure the proper and orderly growth of this land and the city in North Little Rock. It's not going to be orderly growth. There's going to be congestion. There's one way in, one way out. I have.
Michael.
Sure. We have three minutes?
That does.
Okay, okay. In closing, I would just like to say that I appreciate everybody's time on this. I know this has been going on since October through the planning commission and other areas, and we appreciate your time here, and we ask that you vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Cheryl Lewis, you're going to have to do it in two minutes because Michael took one of your minutes.
Well, I'm a woman, I need four.
That's the way we work. Mayor Smith and Council, I appreciate your time today. Listen, I'm going to get right to the point. These are our homes, you know? You wouldn't like it if someone wanted to build a three-story medical building in your backyard, would you? I don't think so. And that's what I'm here to talk about. I live in a neighborhood, and guess what? I have county roads. I don't have city roads. I don't have highways. I have county roads. And guess what my county roads have? They have pothos. Plain and simple. There is one way in and one way out. I don't know if you know where I live or not, but I have pothos. They're narrow roads. They are the roads that close your school district in North Little Rock. That's plain and simple, and you need to think long and hard before you vote on this issue. They have tried this multiple times under different zonings. They have, it's about the third or fourth time they've tried to zone this. This zone, that zone, this first it was going to be, we're going to put restaurants, but it's not going to have this kind, it's not going to have that kind. Now it's up to, well, we think we can. we can get medical facility, three-story. Well, let me tell you something. Over at Northshore, they're building a, in North Little Rock, they're building a medical. Well, guess what? If you didn't know that, over there at Baptist, at Spring Hill, they're building another one. Well, what the heck do we need another doctor's facility for in a residential area that has not coun, not country, we have country roads. I have one way in and one way out. I live on a dead end road, and guess where the dead end road's going to hit? Right in front of that medical facility, people. I want to look you, 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 and you, and you, and you in the eye, and I want to say, is that the way you want to live? All of us don't, and all the people that didn't want to show up don't, because we don't have any way in and any way out. And guess what? Our roads flood. Everything in the cul-de-sac behind me floods, and guess where it goes? Right down. And guess what's going to happen? When those people want to go to work, and those one of people want to go see the doctor, guess what? It floods the road that they're going to come in on. And guess what? Guess what road they're going to come in on? Crystal Hill. How many times you closed that road down this year? Huh? How many times? Just the other day. And I loved it when you opened it up and you made a prayer about the floods coming in. Guess what? Every time my husband goes to work, five days in early Sunday morning, guess what? When it floods, he has to go through that floodwater, and he says to me, "Don't you dare get out in your car, because you will not make it." Okay, so that's where I end, and I'm saying to you, why are we here listening to this again? We've listened to this rezoning for the last time. This is residential, people. This is not something else. Listen to what we're trying to tell you here today. I looked each and every one of you in the eye, and I'm asking for you to put this to bed for the last time. Thank you for your time.
I think you got beat, James.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Mark Melton, nineteen sixty-eight. Do you want to speak now, or you want to wait until there's any questions? Your call.
I'd just like to say that thirty-five years ago, we purchased our property from Floyd Fulkerson, built the church there. And when we got ready to do a parking lot, it's very flat land there, and Floyd came to me and he said, "Pastor, you're fixing to make a mess there on that parking lot if you don't know what you're doing with flat land." He said, "You need an engineer to design that, and I'm going to hire one for you," and he did. And when he laid it out, he laid out a place for the sign. There's an inset along the highway for our parking lot, where the sign goes. And the sign was elevated. I think it's, I don't remember, they have the numbers before them, either eleven or fifteen feet to the top. And if you had cars parking in the parking places adjacent to it there, if the sign was on the ground, you would not even be able to see the sign. Well, just recently, I mean, it lasted for over thirty years, the sign did. Nobody came off the
reconsideration on the ordinance that's been planned to be revoked. And these are
highway to hit it. When it finally got hit, there was an individual that pulled into
the issues that I've ran into with the division. I've had several conversations with the fire
our parking lot at four-thirty in the morning and, by all accounts, fell asleep with his
marshal, and he had also told me that I'll be upset with the division. The fire marshal
foot still on the gas and somehow managed to do a U-turn in our parking lot and then
have had several conversations with my workers, and he stated that the division feels like
run into the sign from the parking lot. He did not come from the highway. He came from
that the building is not suitable and is too old. I've turned in application two times,
the parking lot, destroyed our sign. So we are asking your considerations to replace
and I was addressed by the division. The office was going to reject the application
our church sign. Now, we've been without a sign for a couple of months, and we're
back to me because the application was taking too long, and they told me to get our money
very anxious to try to get this on the road and get it done. And the new sign will be
together. So when I have made a phone call to the division, they state that they're
the same height as what the old sign is, and your considerations would be greatly, greatly
going to shred our application, and later I had to request the application and notice
appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate you.
the information was removed from my original document. I've also had issues with some
If I need to stay here for questions, if you have questions?
Not right now. We'll do it when we call legislation, if anybody has any. Pettigrew, can't read the first name. Anthony, maybe? Anthony Pettigrew? Talk about, oh,
of the few licensed specialists due to the high turnover, due to poorly untrained and unknowledgeable procedures in license. On several occasions, the untrained staff have
nineteen seventy-two?
tried to write up our facility, but we refuse to be written up because they were being biased to our facility. So we contacted the supervisors, and they corrected the licensed specialists. I believe someone on the inside of the division altered our documents, our original documents, from the date that we requested our information back. I believe that we were targeted and to make us go through the process longer. I mailed in my application, and I'm not sure of how many hands this application and my package went to. This is not my character, and I come from a home of good parents and integrity. Someone from the division have had to do this. I was, I never condone in altering any information. I was unaware that the information I received by mail, I completed all the requirements from the division, was completed on four nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, and we also completed the information that's required by the North Little Rock Planning Commission. And we were waiting on Department of Human Services approval. I've talked to the licensed specialist on several times, and she never discussed the issue of the error, and I also talked to her boss, which states that we need to start all over. I've talked to, I've talked to the division...
Three minutes, Anthony.
Okay, that's everything? Okay.
Wrap it up.
Okay. So I basically have the information that's original that I turned in, and they state that the information was altered, and I have the original that I turned in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jody Carpenter, oh, nineteen sixty-six. Jody?
Mr. Taylor, we're all good?
Ah, well, we're good.
Okay, well, sit down.
Thanks.
Tell Larry we said hello.
I will, thank you very much.
Um, I think that's it.
Oh, we got to say?
Oh, okay. So we're just wait, okay. Sorry, Larry told me I could leave, and I'm not going to.
Yeah, don't listen to him.
I figured that out.
Okay, I think that's it for right now. So let's go, I'll tell you what, let's do, let's jump around, since we've got so many people here on nineteen sixty-seven. Without objection, well, I'll tell you what, it's only the second one, so we're good to go. Let's do nineteen sixty-six.
Okay. Councilmember Taylor?
You've called.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a tire shop and an auto detail business in a C four zone at nine-two-three East Broadway Street in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Oh, move to suspend the readings.
Got a motion to suspend. How about a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Any chance of us adjusting these hours, six AM to midnight?
I spoke to the Mr. Carpenter today, and we had some very interesting dialogue. And I expressed some objections that some of the council members had on the time for the, for the shop, and he's willing to adjust those times. His, the basis of those hours was just, just purely entrepreneurial, just to have the flexibility in case it was something other than, than a tire shop that went in there or a detail shop. But he's flexible on the hours.
So what's your pleasure on that? I mean, this is not always going to be a tire shop and a detail shop, and so his concern was, what if it turned into a retail store, like a come-and-go or something like that? So, you know, that'd be a question for Sean. If that changed from a tire shop and a detail shop to a C store, would it have to come back to get reapproval?
No, the conditions would only apply to the tire store or the auto detail.
Right.
So any other store would have normal operating hours.
Would they operate now, was of whatever was by right?
We approve now.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. White?
While Sean's still here, I think I saw this planning commission meeting where number thirteen is east side of Easternmost shipping container to have the appearance of the building. I think I saw this meeting where there was a discussion about the shipping container. Is this, is this something we are doing?
The applicant is asking to use shipping containers back behind the building, so they'll be placed directly behind the building, and the outside edges are to look like the building. So they're going to, if the building has siding on it, it's going to have siding on the shipping containers to match the building. So when you drive by, you will not be able to tell it's a shipping container.
Do we have other shipping containers being used around the city for any purposes?
Any shipping container more than one month comes in front of you all for a special use or a conditional use. So most of them are just one month. So Walmart's done it. I think both Walmarts have done it in the past.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We got a motion to, Ms. Ross?
Back to the shipping container. So it is going to be incorporated into the building?
No, there'll be, there'll be a five, ten-foot difference between them for fire, for our fire codes of what, and then there'll be a break.
And they will be allowed there as long as they're in business there? It's not a one-month?
They're tied, they're tied to, yeah, it's not a one month. It'd be as long as there's a tire store there.
So what are they using the shipping containers for?
Stores doors.
Probably tires.
Sure, come up.
The only thing that, you know, are we opening the door here for all tire stores to put shipping containers behind their building, which I have a big problem with, a lot of limitations that we have tire stores. I don't want to see shipping containers behind tire stores. So that's the problem that I have with it.
And I understand that. If you knew Larry, though, Larry's very particular about how things look, how nice they are, how presentable. I mean, we brought big, I don't know, pictures to our last meeting, like huge pictures, like we just remodeled a shopping center in Fort Worth. I mean, he's very particular. He's not going to let anything look trashy. And I thought these were already approved. So I just didn't...
Well, they've been approved by our planning commission, but we have to...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure nothing happened, like that he's not here talking about...
So what you're saying is that they put storage buildings back there or containers, that they have to color them or decorate them the same way as the building?
Yes.
Have to be of the same material of the building?
Yes. They will look very nice. He's very...
Just still, I mean, and I'm sure that he does do an excellent job, but the next person that comes along, how do we deny them just because we don't know them that they would do a good job on that? So I also have a problem with the shipping containers.
Each legislation stands on its own, so...
It does stand on its own, but how do you deny it just because you don't know them? I guess that's the thing. So...
Well, the legislation calls for it to be decorated, you know? So if somebody wants to spend that much money on a storage container, I don't have a problem with it. But I don't...
It would be uniform to look just like everything on the back of the building as well.
Your call. Okay.
So do we know, is it one shipping container, or there will be several, or?
No, two, right?
Two.
And they were very specific about where they must be put, like how would the view from the side? We went over all that, like...
Okay. Where are we, Ms. Whitby?
It's been, there's a motion and a second to adopt. There are no motions pending to amend.
Okay. So you know more comments?
I do. In this, though, and I don't mean to harp on these shipping containers, it's just I don't want us to open the can of worms here that we can't get the worms back in. But in here, it doesn't, where does it say that it will, it doesn't say in here that it will look like the property, or it'll, it just says allow two shipping containers accessory structures in the rear. Sean is on drawing.
Sean's looking.
Number thirteen.
Number thirteen? The east side of the shipping containers? Can anyone see it from the other, from the other side, the west side?
No, the east side from the main one that you can see from the street.
The only one that you can see? There's not a road behind it or anything that you can see it from?
Railroad checks on one side, woods on the other.
Well, I have a quick question, and this just comes from the business license side. So they're only allowed, the fire marshal only allows so many tires, so I'm assuming that's what that one hundred tires per fifteen square, okay, fifteen hundred?
Okay, any other questions?
I mean, I understand, because I know the storage of the tires, and we have this all over the city. You know, they're in, they're supposed to be covered in their, you know, they leave them out in trailers or whatever and just piled up for water to get in, and then the fire marshal has to go out. So, I mean, I understand this, but, and like you said, each one is individual, so, okay.
Okay, we got a motion?
It's the hours.
Comments?
What did we come up with? What was just suggested? Is there a suggestion on the hours of operation?
I just don't, I'm not, and nor do I think. Again, I think that, you know, there's a lot of folks out there that are eleven o'clock at night going to say, "You know what, Dad Gummit, I need to go get the car detailed." I'm just saying, and again, I, to me...
It wouldn't that necessary. Like, the Taco Bell next door is open twenty-four hours. He's just wanting to allow that leeway in case there was, hey, you know, here I'm having this issue with my vehicle or whatever. Not necessarily the detail shop, but the tire more, you know?
Well, but the hours are listed for the same, both for the detail shop.
Yes, sir, I understand. Yes, sir. He just wanted to allow as much leeway as he could for the possible tenant.
It would be for me to, you know, curb anyone's opportunity to be successful, but I just think that's a little, that's just me, majority of one.
Well, I mean, in my opinion, after talking to Larry, the tire shop's not going to stay open at late. He wants it now so that when it turns into come-and-go or something like that, a retail store, you know, he'll have those midnight hours available. So I can live with that.
So Sean, so the conditions that we're setting on this will, these conditions will be on this particular use?
Only that use.
So if he comes in with a come-and-go, then he's twenty-four-seven?
All goes away.
So you got to come back and get another conditional use if it...
It matters what, if come-and-go would not require.
He would be just like a, he'd be just like the Taco Bell. He could, he could run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, so if we lowered the hours down on the, from midnight to, say, ten o'clock, it wouldn't affect the next guy?
No, it's only going to affect the tire store at that location.
Okay. Wouldn't affect the next use?
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Well, do you want to make a motion to amend, to drop it to ten o'clock?
Sure, I'll make that motion. I'll say.
Okay, Ms. White?
I just had one more comment. What about the containers? If we come to come-and-go, will the containers remain, or will they go?
They will have to go.
Come-and-go won't allow the containers.
Well, just be sure.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to lower the time till ten o'clock instead of midnight.
Is that on, is that on both the tire and the auto detail?
Well, and if it, it will make my fellow council members feel better that if it, if the use changes, then the, then the storage containers go away. If, if the, if the tire is able to go away, then the containers go away.
That's automatic, isn't it, Sean?
That's the way it's written now.
Yeah, okay. We're good.
Good deal.
All right, let's look at the, let's lower it to ten o'clock. We got a motion and a second.
And is that on both? There's...
Both, it's on both.
Okay. To ten?
On the motion to amend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to...
He would be just like a, he would be just like the Taco Bell. He could, he could run 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, so if, if we lowered the, the hours down on the, from midnight to say 10 o'clock, it wouldn't affect the next guy?
No, it's only going to affect the tire store at that location.
Okay. Wouldn't, wouldn't affect the next use?
Right, yeah. All right, well, do you want to make a motion to amend to drop it to 10 o'clock? Sure, I'll make that motion. I'll say. Okay, Ms. White?
I just had one more comment. What about the containers? If we come to come and go, will the containers remain or will they go?
They will have to go.
Oh, come and go won't allow the containers.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to lower the time till 10 o'clock instead of midnight?
Is that on, is that on both the tire and the auto detail?
Well, and if it, it will make my fellow council members feel better that if it, if the use changes, then the, then the storage containers go away. If, if the, if the tire facility goes away, then the containers go away.
That's automatic, isn't it, Sean?
That's the way it's written now.
Yeah, okay.
We're good.
Good deal.
All right, let's look at the, let's lower it to 10 o'clock. We got a motion and a second.
And is that on both? There's?
Both, it's on both.
Okay. To 10?
On the motion to amend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to adopt this amended?
So move. Second.
Questions, comments? On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
It's adopted.
Okay, Jody, you understand what we did? Got to close at 10 o'clock. Right. Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
It seemed like years and years ago on this council, we discussed normal business hours in this city. And do you remember us doing that? I don't, I can't remember what brought it up, but we discussed normal business hours in this city, especially when residences were involved. And I thought we had, I, I thought, I don't know, had put 10 o'clock at, at, on, on certain businesses. I will research that, won't we, council? I'll look that up. Okay, old 1967.
Councilmember Harris?
An ordinance reclassifying property located at Winsong Drive in the city of North Little Rock from R2 to C3 and to the green belt zoning classification by amending ordinance 7697 of the city of North Little Rock adopting an amended land use plan for the subject of property. Second reading.
Okay. Y'all understand what we did? He held it and then he'll have to come back at the next council meeting or whenever he chooses to do that, so. Thank y'all for being here.
Even though he held it, can we not ask questions?
Sure.
Well, my question is, in, is the resident, one of the residents said that, you know, they have been promised to be quiet doctors' offices and why is this a C3 then? Why did they even go for a C3 if they were wanting quite commercial? That's a C1, so.
Ask him, I don't know.
I don't understand why you would go for a C3.
We're looking for transparency.
Okay.
Trying to find out.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Okay, Sean.
You'd have to ask the applicant. I mean, that's what, that's what they're asking for.
Is applicant here?
But C1 would cover quiet offices.
Right, is C1, I mean, is the applicant here? Can you answer that, why you chose a C3, which is a lot more noisier than a C1, which is quite commercial?
This is our dilemma. We're not getting answers.
Hold it. No comments. Thank you. You've had your chance. We have to have some rules, sorry. Okay, thank you, Sean. You might get these answered, you know, if possible. I, I don't know that they have a reason.
I'd be glad to find out.
Okay, let's go on to the next one. If y'all want to ease out, you're certainly welcome to. You don't have to sit here through the rest of the evening, so.
Oh, 1968, Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of the sign requirements of sections 14.112 and 14.19 of the zoning ordinance to allow a freestanding electronic changeable copy ground sign on property located at 12506 Highway 165 in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
You got a motion?
So move. Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Hold it. Ms. Ross?
Electronic copy signs, I have lots of questions on this. I just question the reason for the electronic copy sign there. Is it?
Mark, Pastor, you want to come up? Question was, why do you want an electronic copy sign?
Charles, would you stand? This is the gentleman here that faithfully climbs a ladder, rain, shine, or snow, and changes letters on the sign out there. We're 35 years removed from when that was the current technology. You don't climb ladders to change letters. Somebody, a young lady in the church can be on a laptop. Much safer, much easier, don't have to worry about the weather.
That's in overlay district too, isn't it?
I just have one more thing. I know that it's in an overlay district, but there are some other signs down there that do not, they're constantly abusing the regulations on this, so if this does pass, just please know the regulations. Because there is one right down the street from you that does not follow the regulations that causes planning quite often to have to make phone calls and it's a lot of, takes up a lot of city resource just managing when people don't follow the guidelines. Put that nicely.
Eyes are on you, Pastor. Eyes are on you. Anyway, just follow the rules, you know, 15 seconds before they change or whatever the rules might be. So just rush up on the rules.
We're not here to preach the gospel on our sign.
I, I get it.
We just like to announce events and whatever.
Absolutely. I get it. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
New business, R19102, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment a surplus, providing for an auction thereof.
Move for adoption. Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R19103, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of North Little Rock to utilize federal aid Arkansas Transportation Alternatives Program TAP funds for the 14th Street pedestrian bridge crossing project.
Move for the readings?
Second.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R19104, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Palasque County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
So move.
Public hearing.
Call public hearing. Anyone here to speak on these tax questions on grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Ordinance is O1970, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Hang on. An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements and authorizing payment to Arkansas Power, Steering and Hydraulics for the repair of the city sanitation truck or stream.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion?
So move. Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O1971, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a school in a C3 zone at 115 East 24th Street in the city of North Little Rock. First reading.
How about a motion?
Move to suspend the readings?
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
This was not, there was no objections from Bobby Ackman in our school district and may apply for this charter school. It does have a, their clients, if you will, pupils are going to be those that are at risk and that we're trying to help get through high school with a, with a high school diploma. So it really is a, a, a field of students that need additional help and this is the, they have 70 of these schools across the country and there's four in Arkansas, isn't that right? Four? So, do we have a motion?
No.
So move.
How about a second?